So I'm going to go ahead and start the webinar on this so that our Zoom participants can join us.
Recording in progress.
And that's our queue. And so let me make sure that our participants populate here. Got a couple of attendees online. Very good. Welcome, everyone. Today is October 4, 2022. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council for the first meeting in October. If you would please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. And now we have our roll call for council. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Mayor Paul.
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consideration of the acceptance of grant funds presented by Assemblymember Evan Lowe for Jollyman All-Inclusive Playground in McClellan Road Bridge and a certificate of appreciation for the grant funds. What I'd like to ask our council to do is to go up to the dais, and we'll be joined by our Director of Public Works, Matt Morley, as well as Assemblymember Lowe and members of his office, and our City Manager Pamela Wu. And I understand that there are very large checks to present, assuming that this measure goes through. So let's go up on the dais.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So this is a great project, Jollyman All-Inclusive Playground, where we had a significant amount of money that came to make this project come to fruition, including a very generous contribution from the state, thanks to Assemblymember Lowe and his team of $1 million for this project. It's going to be a great project as it concludes in the beginning of next calendar year. A lot of great staff work making that happen, led by our project manager Evelyn Moran. So a great project and a great contribution to make it actually happen. So thank you to the Assemblymember and your team.
Great. Well. As a strict informality, all in favor of accepting this $1 million, please say aye. Thank you very much. Of course, we'll introduce the other one, and then we'll... So this check, we will deposit in the bank. And Matt, why don't you introduce the next project as well?
The next project is an infrastructure project. So this is replacing significant infrastructure needs that the city has, a bridge that goes over the creek on McClellan Road. This is a big project that we're looking forward to completing. Again, key infrastructure, road infrastructure is important everywhere in the state, and this project will be able to take on, thanks to the generous contribution from the state led by the Assemblymember's office. Thank you very much for that generous contribution.
And not to lie, as an informality essentially, but all in favor of accepting this $5 million from the state and Assemblymember Lowe, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Evan, thank you very much. Of course. So let's move these... Let's check down. You're going to get the bigger ones. And I'll go ahead and... Why don't we do this? Why don't we have the... And then you and I can hold the appreciation from the city. Okay. So would anyone like to hear the certificate of appreciation to our Assemblymember's office?
So this is from the Cupertino City Council to Assemblymember Evan Lowe, in appreciation for your efforts on this day, October 4, 2022, to secure significant funding for the city of Cupertino in the 2022-2023 California budget, allocating $6 million for two projects which promote resiliency and inclusivity for our community. With our deepest thanks, Assemblymember Lowe. And we have an acrylic trophy as well that says, "City of Cupertino All-Inclusive Playground, compliments of our Public Works Department to your staff." So thank you very much, Assemblymember Lowe.
I'll make one comment. I think we've heard over the years a phrase called, "Show me the money." Evan is showing us the money. Thank you.
And as our honored guest, would you like to say a few words, Evan? I know you're extremely well spoken and busy, but perhaps the actions do speak louder than words here.
Thank you very much. I know you have a busy council agenda here today, but on behalf of the state, thank you very much for your commitment and the city of Cupertino's vision in having an inclusive built environment and not necessarily just focus on the operating, but also the capital projects. These are large in magnitude. And as a District 28 of the Assembly District, please don't tell Campbell, Saratoga, Los Gatos, Manas Reno, or San Jose about this project. Just keep it here in Cupertino. But again, to the incredible work led by Mayor Paul, the council, and then staff and community members as well, to helping ensure that we advocate to have an environment where individuals and families can thrive and play at the same time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember Lowe. All right. Thanks, everyone. So we are still under COVID protocol in our city, and throughout the state, we have the ability to go on a month-by-month basis in order to empower the ability to take video meetings. And so this is truly a special occasion in the city of Cupertino, because since the date of March 17, 2022, we have not all sat on the dais together, to my recollection. And so what we're doing right now is that we are going ahead and having three people from council on the dais for each meeting. But because we have such a great opportunity to have some proclamations, as well as a certificate of appreciation for Assemblymember Lowe's office today for these very generous funds from the state, our council felt it very important for these three items that we all appear in person. And so this second item on the agenda tonight is considering a proclamation recognizing October as Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month. And so we're so very pleased in Cupertino to be extremely diverse in our perspectives and from where people come from in the world. And we have a very significant population of people that come from a Hindu-American background. And so what we would like to do now is to recognize several groups that are very active in this community. If my fellow council members and city manager would once again join us at the front of the dais, we would like to ask our Planning Commissioner, Munni Madipadla, who will be introducing a few of the groups to join us on the dais as well.
I just wanted to say a few words.
Oh, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, can I use this?
Oh, sure. Would you like to say?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all, Cupertino City Council.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and Cupertino City Council, for letting me play a small role in declaring October as Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month in Cupertino. I am humbled and honored. About 30% of Cupertino's population being Indian origin, Hinduism is among the most practiced religion in our city. This proclamation and recognition means a lot to the second-largest ethnic group in our city. We have representatives from multiple Hindu organizations present here in the audience. Hinduism, as it's called in the Western world, is sana-thana-dharma, more than a religion, a way of life. Sana-thana-dharma teaches vasiddhava kutumbakam, which means the world is one family. Therefore, these voluntary organizations are providing excellent service to the community at large, following the principles of sana-thana-dharma, which are dharma, which means duty, ekta, unity, satya, truthfulness, ahimsa, nonviolence, viveka, wisdom, nутана, innovation, sadbavana, collaboration, seva, selflessness, utsa, enthusiasm. These are the core principles Hindu-Americans follow to serve the community with dignity, mutual respect, and pluralism. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Sulochanallu La and Govind Tattachari from Hindu American Foundation to come to the dais to receive the proclamation.
I'll be right back to get the...
Yeah.
Thanks, Congressman Morris. And so why don't you trade? Why don't you go and stand?
My name is Sulochanallu La. I'm presenting here on behalf of Hindu American Foundation. Hindu American Foundation is America's biggest educational advocacy nonprofit organization established 19 years ago. HAF, or Hindu American Foundation, works with policymakers, educators, and key stakeholders to champion issues of concern to Hindu-Americans, including defending their civil and human rights and protecting all living beings. Inspired by our guiding principles and Hindu teachings, Hindu American Foundation promotes dignity, mutual respect, and pluralism. Our positions are based on a relentless pursuit of facts, deep consideration of Hindu principles, and American values, such as freedom, equality, justice. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for acknowledging and appreciation of Hindu-Americans celebrating diversity and equality. Direction, directer of communications reach. Thank you.
And we have two more organizations.
So next, I would like to invite Ms. Pushpita Prasad and Nirmalendu Das from Coalition of Hindus in North America. Please come on.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. First of all, namaste. And thank you very much for inviting us here, city of Cupertino. We are very honored to be here, especially to celebrate something as fantastic as the anointing of October as Hindu Heritage Month. I am here on behalf of the Coalition of Hindus of North America, also known as Kona. And my name is Pushpita Prasad. Founded in 2020, Kona is a grassroots Hindu advocacy and education organization. We are focused on representing the Hindu-American voice, whether it's with lawmakers in our schools, in our communities, and everywhere else that Hindu-Americans work, live, and play. Our focus basically has been to make sure that Hindu-American students, workers, and citizens who have been part of this country for decades, right here in the city of Cupertino, as well as the country in general, get adequately represented. Hindu-Americans are all around us, yet we find that only... The pure research shows that only one in four Americans even knows a Hindu. And FBI data from 2020 showed that there was actually a 500% increase in hate crimes against Indian-Americans. So an initiative like Hindu Heritage Month is very critical to make sure that we drive education and understanding of this very deep, rich, and complex faith that is marked by a very holistic grounding in love for the environment and the earth, a very... The cornerstone being an appreciation of pluralism and diversity, and quite uniquely, if I may say so as a woman, a veneration for the divine feminine. And what better time than October, because right now we are celebrating a whole slew of Hindu festivals, Navratri, and what is coming up is Diwali, the Festival of Lights. Navratri, which is culminating tomorrow, is especially important because it's when the community comes together for nine nights and nine days, just to venerate female power. So I think that's a very wonderful thing, makes me very proud, and I'm very happy to be here on behalf of the Coalition of Hindus of North America to accept this honor. Thank you again.
All right. And we have a third organization that will be accepting?
Yep. So next, I would like to invite Mr. Venkatesh Rainivasan, Shanta Ram Nekkar, and Mr. Prashanna Kulkhani from Hindu Swam Sevak Sang.
My name is Venkatesh Rainivasan. I am here on behalf of Hindu Swam Sevak Sang. Thank you, Mayor, for this proclamation, first and foremost. Absolutely. And just a quick intro on HSS. HSS stands for Hindu Swam Sevak Sang. It's a 513 voluntary, nonprofit, social, educational, and cultural organization, famously called Sang. And HSS conducts regular values-based education programs for children, youth, and adults through more than 220 branches within the country. And through our regular educational programs based on dharma, we instill and promote discipline, self-confidence, teamwork, and the spirit of selfless service. Through service activities and outreach projects, we foster a sense of civic duty, responsibility, and volunteerism across the country. Hindu heritage among its members, and to enhance appreciation of Hindus around the world, their traditions, and preserve the civilization by a broader community within the United States. Thank you so much for this proclamation. Thank you.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you very much. And what we'd like to do very briefly is to offer an opportunity for a group shot for all the recipients and the members of their organizations. So if you would all come up onto the dais, we'll make a quick group shot and wish you a very happy October. So thank you very much. All right.
If there could be one row of people in the front, it's Esther's request.
No, no, stand.
If we could... Or maybe if we went on sides, maybe filed in a little bit, try to squeeze and...
Thanks very much, everyone. It's always a pleasure to gratify and affirm and include. And so we are on to item number three, which is the ceremonial matter for considering a proclamation related to Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so my understanding is that we should have somebody on Zoom who will be accepting. And so just to remind everyone, after this ceremonial item, a couple of our council members will be going off of the dais so that we can socially distance under these conditions. And so we'll take a 15-minute break after item three. And so, Madam City Clerk, could you please remind me, I believe it was Rena Bello, and is that...
Yes, Mayor. Rena Bello, Executive Director from Bay Area Cancer Connections, is logged on. I see her there.
Okay, very good. And so Rena, welcome. Would you like to say a few words about the city of Cupertino's Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation for the year 2022?
Sure. Thank you so much for having us here. It's really an honor to be here again, and well, to see everyone virtually. And it's very meaningful. You know, Bay Area Cancer Connections, our goal is to support anyone who is affected by breast or ovarian cancer with services that are personalized and that are meant to inform and empower. And to be able to have the support of the city of Cupertino in this proclamation means a lot. There's... You know, the cancer is very much... It's very much afflicting a lot of people. Even during the pandemic, I think it's really given a lot of light to what they're going through, and particularly these financial challenges. Cancer doesn't stop. And so being able to bring awareness to it every, you know, every day is important, but particularly during this month. So for BACC, an organization that has been around for almost 30 years, providing these services to the community, all free of charge, and growing in terms of our service area, we're expanding because more and more people need us. So we want to thank you all for your support, for your generosity, in helping to bring awareness to breast cancer, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you very much, Rena. And on behalf of the city and community of Cupertino and the surrounding area, we're very grateful for the work that your organization and many other organizations do on behalf of raising breast cancer awareness and the fight against this disease and many other forms of cancers. And so we are just tremendously happy to be able to enhance the awareness and make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can to eradicate this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so at this point, we're going to go ahead and just present the proclamation. And actually, I think we might have a copy of the proclamation here in hard copy, if I'm not mistaken. So what we'll go ahead and do, I will provide the proclamation on my screen. And if my fellow council members and Rena, you would like to just smile to the screen momentarily, we'll take a quick group shot. Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to have a few ceremonial items tonight. We will go ahead and take a brief recess of approximately 15 minutes so that a couple of our council members can reset up at a remote location. So thank you. And it is 7:10 right now. We'll start up again at around 7:25 or thereabouts. We'll see you then. We'll see you then. So we're starting the October 4th, 2022 council meeting again. Thank you for some excellent ceremonial matters for items one through three. Right now, we are at postponements and orders of the day. I'd like to ask any of my council colleagues whether they have any suggested postponements and orders of the day. After asking our city clerk, are there any staff-requested postponements or orders of the day?
No staff requests, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore with a hand raised. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I would like to move items 14 and 15 on to consent with the well-considered staff recommendations.
Okay, item 14 is the consideration of authorizing execution of an agreement between the City of Cupertino and the Cupertino Historical Society. Item 15 is a progress update on the Climate Victory Gardens pilot program. Both of them have recommended actions. And so Councilmember Moore has moved those recommended actions on to consent. Do I have a second for Councilmember Moore's motion? So let me see if either Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Willie will second. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand was raised first. You'll need to turn on your microphone, Vice Mayor. Not that one. Turn off the computer one so that you don't get feedback.
So I understand someone wants to speak on one of these items. So how would we handle public comment?
Well, if we ended up putting it on consent, I guess it's still on the agenda. It could be potentially polled for the purposes of taking the public comment. But if the public commenter's comment is in alignment with the recommended action, then I would suggest that that public comment would not be necessary since that would be on consent. So I would suggest that we either take a second from you, Vice Mayor Chow, or perhaps we can, for purposes of further discussion, go on to Councilmember Willie to see, because procedurally, I'd like to take a second before we continue with any discussion on this item.
Yeah, I don't want to prevent the public from commenting on the item, so yeah.
You want a second? Okay, understood. Now, Councilmember Willie, would you like to second the motion? And Councilmember Willie, if you'll unmute your microphone.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I'll second with the provision that we do take public comment.
Okay, well, very good. Let me go ahead and consult with our city attorney. Chris, if we wanted to go ahead and just take the public comment for the purposes of that public comment, could we put that potentially in oral communications prior to considering the consent calendar?
So yes, you have discretion to do that. You're also, it is also permissible to take public comment on the consent calendar without pulling an item from the consent calendar if council desires to use that procedure?
Okay, understood. Well, I think that my colleagues would agree that that makes a lot of sense if we're on the consent calendar and we'll take public comment at that point. If anyone objects, please do raise your hand. But I'll go ahead and open up public comment for the consent calendar items, irrespective of whether they're polled when we get to the consent calendar, assuming that this item that is now on the dais as a motion passes. So any other comments from my council colleagues on this motion for postponements and orders of the day? I will remind everyone that Councilmember Moore has moved and Councilmember Willie has seconded items 14 and 15 to be added to the consent calendar. Seeing no hands raised, let us go ahead and take a vote. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We are next on oral communications. Oral communications is for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. You will be called upon first if your hand is raised in the Zoom function. And so right now, of the attendees, I see Jennifer with a hand raised. And so in addition to that, you have the ability to consolidate your time. If you consolidate your time with others, then that exhausts your ability to speak. So you'll have to have a representative as you're consolidating the time. And each person will be able to allocate two minutes. So if you have two people, then you can have a four-minute presentation by one of the people. If you would rather just have a longer presentation where each person takes three minutes, then don't consolidate your time, is what I would suggest. After we go to the Zoom function, we will then go to live public comment on blue cards. And while that first person is speaking, or for up to three minutes, we will go ahead and take additional hands on Zoom or people that are filling in their blue cards, as well as any people that are emailing the city clerk. That is cityclerk@cupidino.org. That is all one word, cityclerk@cupidino.org. If your email is sent during that amount of time, that period of time where the first person is speaking, or within the first three minutes of commentary here for oral communications, then up to three minutes of your email will be read into the record. And so we still have Jennifer with a hand raised, and the other hand is raised by Judy Lomas. And so let us go to Jennifer. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. It's nice to see you all there, your smiling faces. Hi, I'm Jennifer, and it's just me, just my three minutes. You know, I'm just going to start up. I think I sent an email to you all. This, we just finished the aggravating, concerning, distressing summer of, again, waiting for what bills the governor's going to sign. It's, this is like, I think it started with Jerry in 2017, and then Gavin's. It's been three or four years. It's been very distressful, nerve-wracking, and he, the governor, pretty much signed every single housing, high-density housing bill, every ADU bill possible. And the 30th is gone, yep. So in retrospect, now that not only is the public saddled with SB 9, SB 10, we have, the governor, of course, signed AB 2011, which is the, let's build housing on any contaminated land that was retail in the state. We have AB 2097, which means we will have no parking spaces, and a whole plethora of ADU bills where you can build ADUs on the sidewalk, in the road, cut down all the trees. And I have come to the conclusion, since I, as a grown woman, have had a lot, a lot of experience. of experience with land use. My mother's family in Virginia were involved in road construction, et cetera, et cetera, highways, surveying. I know, as an adult, a lot about land use. And I am not convinced that the writers of these housing bills, especially the ones like, let's split a lot ministerially, or we're going to build something four feet from the neighbor's property without telling them, that is ludicrous. Whoever has written those bills has no, I will repeat, no experience with land use. I would like to know who these bill authors are. The public has not been allowed to say anything, and now that the dust has settled, the public gets to say things. We are the ones that are going to have our lives, our homes invaded by supposedly ministerially lot splits. No one in their right mind would do that. Even a third grader would realize that you can't do that. You have to tell the neighbors. Anyone that is going to be having someone doing that construction next door, you would, I would immediately hire a surveyor, and I'd have to pay $5,000 to $10,000 to have my lot and land surveyed, because you don't want your neighbor building part of their house on your property. I mean, this is what we're being subjected to. And I can tell you right now, that they have, whoever wrote those bills have no idea about infrastructure. Right now, the people that survived the hurricane in Florida are having to have the state go back in and put in appropriate infrastructure. Can you imagine if these housing bills were built in Florida? What a disaster. Let's pull, let's call out who these authors are.
Thanks so much, Jennifer.
And see what the credentials are.
Okay, next we have Judy Lomas and Dawn Halsey. Dawn has requested that his time be consolidated with Judy, and I believe that he has a, he has a presentation. And so the city clerk will show that. We also have Jean Bedord and Bing Ray and Venkat Ranganathan. And Madam City Clerk, were there any blue cards that came in or any emails to your cityclerk@gmail, I'm sorry, at Cupertino.org account that came in during this time?
Just checking one more time, Mayor. No.
Okay, so besides the people listed, and during this time, we also have Lisa Warren with a hand raised. And so we'll go ahead, again, that's Dawn Halsey and Julia Lomas. We'll have a four-minute presentation by Dawn, Jean Bedord, Bing Ray, Venkat Ranganathan, and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Dawn. You'll have four minutes for your presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, council members and mayor. I am here again before you, and hopefully it will be a relief to some of you that, to hear that I'm not going to talk about a golf course. I will talk about the natural habitat option or things related to that. So let's get on with it. Next slide. Next slide, please. We're going to talk about natural habitat, or that's presented as an option, but here's another idea that I think the council members may want to consider. Next slide, please. How about extending the Stevens Creek Trail so it connects to the Stevens Creek County Park? In that image you see there on top right, you can see the Blackberry Farm, and across the street from that is the McClellan Ranch. The trail goes right up to McClellan Road, and then you can actually walk to the right side of the Deep Cliff Golf Course up there, and then there's a park called Linda Vista Park, so you can get kind of toward the county park. Let's take a look. And the county park has trails and a bunch of good stuff there, restrooms, a water fountain I found today. So let's take a look at the next slide. On the left, there's the good old survey we got done by the consultants, and it shows in, in yellow, there's the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, which could become natural habitat. In fact, the survey results showed that of the Cupertino residents, 57% preferred natural habitat over the golf course. That's a choice. That's something they made. We've talked about that before. But I want to say, how about something else? Instead of widening the path, which you can see adding that terrain to the right of the creek does, instead of widening the path, how about lengthening it? And here's a pullback on the right showing the path that exists, and that red rectangle is the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. It's actually shifted up and to the right a little bit while I was moving things to this slide. And then you can keep hiking across the, over the avenue, and then to the right of the Cliff Golf Course on that green path that I show. Again, it's shifted a little bit to the right. And what you cannot do is the orange dotted line. That's a path that is not connected, or actually it's blocked off, can't be used by the public. Next slide, please. Here's a detailed look at what I'm thinking about here. Using the wonders of Google Earth, you can look in on the Deep Cliff Golf Course, and there on the right hand side, you can see that green border. That's where you can walk up a path from McClellan Road, and then there's Linda Vista Park, which you see. And then I put in a yellow line indicating what would be nice if you could hike. It has some segments that all go together, and if you add them together, Google tells me it's 3,405 feet. Let's take a look at the next slide. Why do we even want to look at this? Well, you can go to a certain websites, and it'll tell you what it costs to build a two-lane road or a sidewalk, and they even tell you what it costs to make a trail. And that's $700,000 per mile. This is to assist you in bidding federal and state contracts and things like that. Well, $700,000 a mile, that's $132 a foot. And naturally, you will say, what is 3,405 feet? That's $132 feet. Sorry, $132 a foot, that's $449,000. And if you've been paying attention to all this stuff, you know that's a lot less than the natural habitat estimate of $1.9 million. So you are going to ask, certainly the skeptics will ask, on the next slide. All right, it's cheaper. So how do we know if people even want this? Got to do a survey. I did that. Next slide. Went to the hiking trail, asked people, and 75% prefer extended connect.
15 seconds.
Natural habitat, couple, you know, both or neither. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dawn. And we next have Jean Bedord, Bing Ray, Venkat Ranganathan, and Lisa Warren. And I do want to say that we did have one speaker card. We had one blue card that had come in. I apologize for this. It was right next to me on the dais. This was from Rhoda Frye, and she had listed no topic listed on the agenda, and so that was well within the time. And so we'll go ahead and call on Rhoda after Lisa. And so next we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. Jean, if you can hear us, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Okay, the unmute finally came on. Good evening. I'm a little bit confused because what I wanted to speak to tonight was the historical society funding, and by moving it to the consent calendar, it wasn't clear when I should speak up. But I simply want to say, I completely support the proposal that's in front of you, and I've also sent through a PowerPoint presentation, which I think is fairly explanatory, and so I'm more than happy to move on and, you know, you put it on consent calendar and you approve it. I simply want to say that, you know, the historical society provides a tremendous amount of value to the community. You know, there are actually three different operations, and while the four, next slide, while the 40,000 is, stabilizes operations for right now, I think you need to consider in the future a higher annual line item to support the historical society. And basically, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Jean. And next we have, oh, and to answer your question, I know that we don't really give feedback during oral communications, but this is a somewhat unusual situation. So what we had spoken about was opening up consent calendar to comments, even if nothing is pulled from the consent calendar. But I was willing to provide the minute, and thank you, Jean, for being brief on that. And so we'll go ahead and adhere to that as well, if anyone has anything to say on consent. Bing Ray, welcome, Bing. And Bing, you'll need to unmute your microphone?
Okay, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, council members and the mayor. And I would like to come on two things, as probably most of your council member know, we are representing a group of residents against Verizon's installing FG cell towers. And when doing this process, which is new to me, I realized, you know, I don't know what's the best way to make our opinion cross, and so I contacted the different council members through emails, and the city attorney told me that there's some kind of a political interference. So I'm a little bit confused, like, what is the best way to reach councils? I mean, I even didn't know this channel exists, so I'm so happy that I got to the three minutes, which I didn't have to go show up in somebody's election campaign, right? But, so what is consistent political interference? So I don't want to step on the boundary. I would like to get a clarification. Secondly, when we find a law case, right, we think, oh, it's pertinent on the issue, and I was hoping the city manager, a city attorney, can take a look, maybe issue attorney's opinion on that. And I don't know how to do it, because when I emailed the attorney, the attorney basically said it doesn't apply. But I'd like to know more, why it doesn't apply? What's the reason, right? So I assume somehow we should get that kind of answer from city attorney, but I don't know how. So hopefully, city council members can help us. We're just a resident, try to reach out, right? We don't know the system as well, so sometime, maybe we step on toes, hopefully not intentionally, but like, this is kind of important, the attorney can tell us, oh, is this law relevant or not? And in which way is relevant, in which way doesn't apply? And I don't feel like, when I email the city attorney, the city attorney simply tell me it doesn't apply, end of the story. I feel like as a resident, I should have the right to know the answer in detail, okay? I mean, because we are not expert in this area, and city attorney is. And also, I would like to clear, give clarification, what is political interference? And I didn't think much because I thought city council members represent us people, so we just voice opinions through different council members. Hopefully, they can represent us, right? It's very simple, or maybe too simple-minded. So that's all, that's my comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Bing. Next, we have Venkat Ranganathan, and Venkat, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having my comments. And Venkat Ranganathan, a resident of Cupertino. First of all, as a resident Hindu American, I am proud and thankful to the city for proclaiming October as a Hindu religious month, and also want to thank all who helped this proclamation happen, really a proud moment. I just have one question on the homeless housing I have been talking about before, particularly about the individual portal in Stevens Creek Junction. We need a shelter, given that the onset of October, it is getting colder and darker and the, earlier than, during the traffic, peak traffic time also in the evenings. And so the traffic hazards and infectious disease hazards are going to be on the rise, and so if there is any progress on this matter, I would like to get an update if possible. Thanks a lot. That's all.
Thank you very much, Venkat. And next we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'd like to touch on a couple things. First being, in addition to what Dawn had said about extending the trail versus trying to obliterate the golf course to have an unknown length, maximum three-quarter of a mile, additional loop to the existing trail. There was an announcement made by Walk By Cupertino in the mid-September, and they say that the announce, that the pedestrian trail extension of the Stevens Creek Trail is now open north of Stevens Creek, where the trail has previously ended. It is now possible to cross from the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard by going under the road, overpass, and onto the new trail on the north side, which runs along, if I'm not mistaken, Varian Park. So there is already, apparently, according to Walk By Cupertino, there's already an existing extension north to the trail. So if you added that to what Dawn's suggesting, or even without Dawn's suggestion, it just becomes more and more clear that a loop of trail, a natural habitat, that is going to be not naturally produced, is already being handled by actual natural habitat. So just, that's just aside, because Dawn mentioned, and I thought I would add that. In addition, I believe that there should probably be, no, I do believe there, I strongly believe there should be a study session with city council and potentially planning commission, a joint study session, to discuss what Gavin Newsom has recently approved, or stamped or signed, and how it affects things specifically in Cupertino, but everywhere without, within the state, truly. Because it appears that the owners of Valco and others have succeeded in getting changes made to the SB 35 again. First, they eliminate and get an extension till forever to build, instead of having their three-year requirement to go vertical, and they keep chipping away and changing the original SB 35, which was not being handled well. But now, apparently, there is some wording that would require, well, not require toxic cleanup on sites in certain situations.
15 seconds.
And I really think that the city needs to understand this publicly and have attorneys, et cetera, weigh in on what it really means. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And next we go to our live blue card. That is from Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. And you'll have three minutes. It's great to have someone live and in person. This is a rare treat for us these days. Welcome.
Good evening. I have a lot to talk about tonight and an ask. First, when our city posts on Nextdoor by association, it makes it look as though the city approves of the platform. I would like to see a disclaimer on city posts. Why? Because Nextdoor has become a nasty place of misinformation and smears that destroy facts and civil discourse. Posts are spontaneously removed or downgraded, and even our own elected officials have been removed. I ask that the city have a disclaimer on posts, and also that our community participate appropriately in the democratic process. Next, I would like to thank our city council for investing in a third-party operational assessment following the discovery of an $800,000 embezzlement that occurred between 2000 and 2014. Many problems have been discovered in the finance area, and I'm glad to see them getting resolved, such as producing monthly finance reports as required by law instead of quarterly, moving toward a centralized purchasing, and halting the exorbitant cash handouts to the Chamber of Commerce without any return on investment. Interestingly, many of these issues had been reported in a wrongful termination lawsuit by a former city attorney. He had been fired in 2018 after a closed-session meeting in which written communication from J.R. Frueen in which written communication from J.R. Fruin urged for his replacement. And Jean Bedore didn't like his by-the-book approach. Among other items, the former attorney lamented about an overly friendly relationships between council staff with developers and contracts written without consulting the city attorney. I'm really glad to see that these things are getting resolved, and I really want to encourage you to keep up the good work. It's great to see our city council helping to right the ship. Last, I shared Jennifer Griffin's outrage over our state's overreach into local land use. Most recently, as Lisa Warren mentioned, with building on toxic sites and also effectively reducing the number of affordable units required in development. We need to restore local control. On this slide, by the way, this is, this is from the Moss Adams report that shows a lot of the finance issues that need to be handled. And lastly, it's just really, it's troubling to see also some of our former leaders in the city bullying officials. I have, I submitted some documents in, in public comment that you'll be able to find later, where our former mayor Lowenthal and actually Historical Society as well is pushing our county Department of Environmental Health to move forward on Valco and get on with this toxic cleanup out there. We really need to be, we need to be concerned about toxics on soils. We can see what's happened in Bayview-Hunters Point in San Francisco, where you've got generations of people, generations of families who've had cancer. We don't want this in our community, especially if we've got affordable housing. Those people are going to be taking advantage of Valley Health, and it's going to wind up costing us taxpayers. If we just look at it from a dollar sense, not even a, you know, a human, the appropriate thing for people. It's, it's just not right. So I thank you. Keep up the good work and have a good night.
Thank you, Rhoda. We are now on to the next item on our agenda, and that item is under reports by council and staff. Item number four is a set of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. And just as a guideline, about a minute or so. And if any one of my colleagues would like to provide a an update with regard to any of their activities, since I believe it was September 20th when we last met in regular session, feel free to do so. And I'll also remind people, in addition to the one minute or so time limit, this was initially put into place to briefly follow up on things you might have heard during oral communications. And so this would be a good time to do that if you didn't want to wait until the end of the meeting with regard to the follow-ups. But, but again, let's adhere to those, those time recommendations. I see that Councilmember Willie has a hand up. And so Councilmember Willie, you're first under item four.
Yeah, it's great that this comes right after public comments so that hopefully they can still hear. You know, the concerns about the 5G and also about the bill, housing bills that Newsom is proposing. At the end of our meeting, we have future agenda item requests. And letting the residents know, I'll be requesting a future agenda item for the housing bills. We already have a study session that will be coming to us on the 5G. We just don't have a date yet. So that being said, you know, there were quite a few events. This was a very busy week with the Fun Fest, the Bike Fest, the Volunteer Fair, all great events. It was great to see so many of our community members attending them. I'll leave it with that, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. A great example set by the time limitation as well. Do I see any other hands raised here for Vice Mayor Chow? You have your hand raised here on the desk.
Yeah, we have some great event in the past two weeks. On the 24th, I attended the Bike Fest too. I scootered to the event and then took a car ride to Memorial Park to the next event, which is a day and night fun festival at the Memorial Park. After the event, I was trying to take via, but then my phone died. So eventually I decided to scooter back from Memorial Park to the library. And then from the library, I scooted home. It was wonderful to scooter around in Cupertino. I encourage more people to do it. On the first of October, we had a volunteer fair. And I took the chance at the day and night fun festival and volunteer fair to visit many, many booths. And we have wonderful nonprofit organizations and amazing booths by the city staff to, about a lot of exciting programs by the city. Really had found, I wish we had done a little better outreach for the volunteer fair next year. So hopefully more people will come out next year.
Okay, great, Vice Mayor Chow. And so let's go on to Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm a cup of activities. We, I think a lot of us attended the ribbon cutting at the Nirvana Soul. It's a place that really offers good drinks and is, I think, the first city-sponsored ribbon cutting. So we are sponsoring retails and in our city. I'm glad they're coming back after the pandemic. And I attended two State of the City address. One is in Campbell, one in Saratoga. It's really good to connect with our neighboring cities and listen to the status of their city, which also is part of the greater Silicon Valley that we belong to. Another event I attended is the webinar on elected, elected officials foreign on electrification reach codes. It really details a lot of the reach codes that a lot of cities are doing. And two things I learned from it is we need to plan in advance to be, and also be creative. So I think our city Cupertino is doing a really good job on this front. And of course, the volunteer fair is really a good one to meet a lot of nonprofits. And I did meet a cup of, you know, Barbara and Bill from Heart, which they do consulting and also mental health issues for teens and families. I had a good chat with them. Hopefully in the future, our city can collaborate and provide mental health service, walking clinic, or resource center for our residents. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilmember Wei. And we will go next to Councilmember Moore.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Keep it really brief. So I too was at the volunteer fair. And I want to thank staff, particularly Rochelle Sanders and all of her helpers for doing such a great job from Parks and Rec. It was really well done and I think everyone had a really great time out there. So I manned the council booth. We had three compilation binders of the council action newsletters there. So I want to, if you haven't seen the council action newsletters that have gone out this year, please visit the city website and take a look. They're, they're awesome. If you're wondering what council's been up to for the entire year, it's there. I attended a TOD community outreach meeting on Thursday, September 29th, from VTA regarding a 100% affordable project going in around the Berriessa Station. And I've connected with one of the presenters to tour a similar supportive housing project in the area. And I also went to the very cool Nirvana Soul ribbon cutting on September 22nd. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. I went to most of these events mentioned by my colleagues. And I was really happy to see the economic development manager being able to manage ribbon cutting. I was very, I think I should say encouraging about bringing that wherewithal in-house and hopefully helpful as well. So in terms of the states of the city, I also went to those two states of the city that were mentioned by Councilmember Wei. And I thought it was a really interesting idea. We always peg our state of the city to the last Wednesday in January. And I think that's a great idea to have it at the beginning of the calendar year because it actually helps to map out the upcoming year. But there are certainly other ways to do it. So typically, the mayors of our cities are selected at the end of the year. And so for Saratoga and Campbell, as well as Sunnyvale, I should say, because I forgot to mention that I had attended that one last time. They have it more around this time of the year, more of a recap of the, of the year. So we had a Boy Scouts visit here on September 30th last Friday. And so it was wonderful to be able to give them a tour of City Hall. And I understand that Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore afterward gave them a tour of the library as well. And so our city librarian Claire Vareseau was very gracious, I hear, in showing the Boy Scouts around the library expansion room as well. So this afternoon, and my apologies, I apologies, my apologies to my council colleagues, as I was driving to Pineapple Thai, which is the Assembly District 28 Business of the Year, it dawned on me that perhaps the other council members would want to attend as well. So I tried to reach out with the AirPod, of course, not, you know, holding the device while driving. And I did get Councilmember Moore to attend. And so my apologies to my other council members that wasn't able to reach them in time. But the AD 28 business, a small business of the year, is Pineapple Thai, very well deserved. I saw Assembly Member Lowe, of course, there, and so it was great to see him as well here. So with that, I'll go on to item number five. Item number five is a report on our committee assignments. And the delineation between item five and item four is that the committee assignments, by and large, are divvied out at the end of the year when we make our council transition. And so with regard to the various committees that we sit on throughout the region, this is our opportunity, a couple of minutes each, to give us an update on those various assignments that we have to all these various jurisdictions that we belong to as as a, as a ramification of the fact that we're on our, our, our city council here. So would anyone like to provide updates on committee assignments since September 20th, when we last regularly met? And I'll go by a show of hands. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have one committee that I attended, and it's called Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority Board of Directors Meeting. It is a very important agency that's consolidated with all our cities, plus Valley Water, hospitals, police, and fire in case there is a disaster, they can communicate via interoperability. So it's complicated, very technical, so I learned a lot. So we went over the finance and challenges of connecting each other. So I think we're making really good progress on that part. So I'm very proud to be a part of that agency. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. And remind me when I give my report to talk about SVRIA as well. So let us go to, I believe it was Councilmember Willie who had his hand up next. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Silicon Valley Clean Energy, our meeting isn't until next week, but some noteworthy events. Councilman Wei mentioned the Reach Code 2.0 workshop. To elaborate just a little bit more, let the residents know, this Reach Code 2.0 is for new construction, and it's for hopefully gas or electric only usage unless the, the owner has some requests for variances, temporary hopefully. But at any rate, the workshop was to clearly help all of us cities understand, you know, the ramifications of going to all-electric and how we can ease into this transition for our communities. That being said, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy is also offering grants for infrastructure resiliency. And I want to mention that might be a bit confusing. But to put it in context, if I just kind of bring up a case in point, Saratoga has taken advantage of this grant process that they're offering and using it to get battery backup for 14 of their roadway signals. So in the event of a power outage, their signals will not stop like we normally see. And all of a sudden, the streets are black and, and nobody knows who's going next. Well, maybe our city staff can look into us also partaking in this. But it is important to realize it's, it's not, not without any responsibilities. It's a 50%. So, you know, the city itself has to put up half the cost for the resiliency that they're going to be procuring. But nonetheless, that is money that's available to help us and our community. Wouldn't it be nice to keep our road signals operating even in power outages or other areas that we might need resiliency? With that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And we next have no hands raised, but I'll recognize Councilmember Moore, whose hand just went up in Zoom. Councilmember Moore.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So on September 26th, the Audit Committee met. As you know, we've now needed to be at a monthly meeting frequency. Previously, this was a quarterly, a quarterly committee. And so we began with looking at our annual audit and getting a report from CRO. So that, that project is underway. Now we have the monthly treasurer's investment reports. I strongly suggest and recommend that if you haven't dropped by one of the Audit Committee meetings, that you at least sit in for the Chandler Investment Report and ask any questions. We get a very lively and thorough discussion of the markets. And because it's monthly, we're really getting a lot of great information there. Now, for item four, it was an action item to look at the monthly treasurer's report. And the mayor actually did have a question about the book drop work plan item, which was, it showed up in the accounts payable, and staff will be getting back to us on that particular item. And we had an informational item on the unassigned fund balance and the use of one-time funds policy. And we got a great presentation from the Director of Administrative Services, Christina Alfaro. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And next we have, I believe, Vice Mayor Chow. Did you want to give your update? I'd be happy to provide my update for committee assignments. No committee assignments since then. Okay, so I also sit on the Audit Committee, Committee. And I think Chair Moore of the Audit Committee gave a great summary. And so I'll just report out briefly on the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting. We had Vice Mayor Chappy Jones of San Jose there to speak to the mayors of Campbell, Montes Reno, Los Gatos, Saratoga, and myself. And we also had the city managers of all those cities. And we meet on a monthly basis, talk about various issues of regional significance and interest to the West Valley Mayors and Managers Group. And so it's fairly self-evident as to why we would have the West Valley Mayors and Managers host the Vice Mayor of San Jose. Because Vice Mayor Jones represents the West San Jose region in, in his jurisdiction. And so you can imagine there were a number of questions about various developments. And so Vice Mayor Jones, like myself, is in his second term. And he terms out at the beginning, I believe, actually, I believe they go until the end of the calendar year. But he also talked about, in addition to development, the various things that people are doing on a transit and transportation basis. He is the Chair of the VTA Board. VTA hasn't met since September 20th. We both sit on the Board of Directors of VTA. And so talking about the various types of things that we can do to move transportation and transit forward, that's an interesting conversation, I think very important for the future health and vibrancy of our entire region for, for many years to come. As well as, you know, frankly, a lot of infrastructural issues need to be answered because we're such an economic engine of the entirety of the world, but don't really have that, that kind of transit system that was supposed to be built out decades ago. So Councilmember Wei, as promised, I'll go back to SVRIA. And so I'll go ahead and very briefly, I'll call on you, Vice Mayor Chow, in one moment when I finish up my summary. So the next meeting of the West Valley Mayors and Managers, they're going to ask the representative for SVRIA to show up. And so that is yourself, Councilmember Wei. And so we'll be inviting you to, to speak to our group. The final thing is that the VTA Board Representative from the West Valley has now been open for applications. So my fellow council members, if you're interested in applying, please do apply. The five West Valley mayors will be voting on that in November. And now Vice Mayor Chow, you had indicated, and you also didn't speak on this item. So feel free, if you recalled a summary or I suppose to respond to any of the summary points. However, I will remind you that this is not really discussion oriented, but if you have a brief comment, happy to.
So on, like Councilmember Willie, we did not have a subcommittee meeting of the community engagement plan. However, we did have a community workshop on the 26th of September. And I'm happy that I was able to connect the Executive Director of Project Sentinels. And they were able to attend the committee, the meeting. And the focus was on low-income homeowners and the workers of Cupertino. on low-income homeowners and the workers of Cupertino. And I'm happy that to learn Project Sentinel actually have a home-sharing program that they are providing for low-income homeowners. And I also learned that there is another organization called the, called the Rumilly, and they provide the home matching sharing service for Alameda and Santa Clara County through Silver Nest, which is an online platform for matching. So.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And so that will do it for item number six, the Subcommittee Assignments. Next on our, oh, no, actually, that does it for item five. Our next item on the agenda is item six. That's the Report on Subcommittee Assignments. And same parameters, time-wise, go for any updates for subcommittees. Do we have any Subcommittee Members that would like to provide some updates since September 20th? And I see Councilmember Moore's hand is raised. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, well, I'll see if Councilmember Willie wants to provide an update for our Subcommittee, or is it all right if I just go ahead and work through it? Okay, I see a head nod, I'm going to work through it. Okay, so Councilmember Willie and I are both on the City Hall Subcommittee. We first met August 2, 2022, and we've been working with staff from various departments, and in particular, Matt Morley, the Director of Public Works, and Susan Michael, who is our Capital Improvement Program Manager. At that time, we toured the building, we discussed the need for the project, and worked on meeting agenda topics. And then we next met on September 22nd, and, I mean, September 1st, and we went over the structural analysis and the reasons for the project, such as the seismic and MEP deficiencies. On September 22nd, the meeting we just had, we went over the EOC, and we had a presentation from Tom Chim, an excellent presentation. And he is our Emergency Manager. And I'm hoping that he'll provide this presentation to council in the future regarding the EOC and what our emergency plans are like. And we also had a, some presentation from Susan Michael, and again, Matt Morley, regarding the, the cost drivers, location options, and the justifications for the EOC. And our next meeting will be October 13th, and we've combined a couple of items, programming, which is staff and community program requirements in the space, and parking, the use analysis, and code requirements. And we are hoping to wrap up around November 3, and you should have an excellent presentation after that. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And I see Councilmember Willie has a hand raised now. Councilmember Willie, any updates on Subcommittee Assignments since September 20th?
Oh, say Councilman Moore did an excellent job of the City Hall Subcommittee. The Torrey Building, which is associated with it, will be coming to us, I believe, at our next council meeting, which will also have some discussion about the EOC with it. I'll leave it with that for today. Thank you, Mayor, and good job, Councilman Moore.
And good job to both of you. Thank you for your service on the Subcommittee. We will go ahead and move to item number seven, which is our City Manager Update. And so City Manager Pamela Wu, would you like to give us your update for this October 4 meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just a few things, other than highlighting the wonderful events that we've had, you know, Volunteer Fair, the Bike Fest, a really big shout out to City Council, and also the staffs who are supporting these. On the separate matter, last Thursday, September 29, city staff team had a City Council Candidate Orientation, and this is our opportunity to provide all the candidates, and opportunity to ask questions and hear the explanation at the same time. The purpose of this orientation was to learn about the roles and responsibilities for City Manager, City Attorney, and also provide an overview for City Department, their areas of responsibility. The Sheriff's Office was also in attendance, and just wanted everyone to know that this presentation, and also questions that were asked during the session, has been posted on the city's website. Next on the, my report has to do with one of the earlier public comments, the 5G small cell deployment. Just wanted staff, City Council and the community to know that staff has been working closely with neighbors in the Granola Drive neighborhood concerning this new deployment. There were also some emails sent to City Council regarding this matter. Just wanted to assure the council and the residents that the Public Works staff has been coordinating, and also in conversation with these residents. And please assure that, you know, staff has been communication, and the residents of the permit process, and staff understand that has expressed and share frustration of nothing that can be done, because there are other federal and state regulation that precludes the local control, local control from this matter. Lastly, this has to do with the unhoused individual on portal. Again, I wanted to thank City Council and the community for your overwhelming support for the well-being of this individual. This is not easy. And I just wanted to assure the City Council and the community that Sheriff's Department and various support organizations, such as the County of Supportive Housing, West Valley Community Services, and city staff has been in communication with this individual continuously, and will continue to look for the best alternative solution for this individual. And the community is encouraged to report immediate life safety concern by calling or texting 911, and any concern about the encampment or any other unhoused individual can also be reported through Cupertino 311. And that concludes my report for today.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Let's move on to item number, I believe it was eight, and that is the Economic Development Committee Update. And so just to expound upon this, this isn't a regular update on our City Council Agenda. However, we had started a few meetings back, some rotating updates throughout our city departments initially, but we do know that there are some updates in terms of the other functions of our personnel that would be extremely useful. And the Economic Development Committee, we have chartered, you know, at long last, thankfully. And so it looks like there is an update on that committee development. And so, Madam City Manager, would you care to update the presenter, or rather, provide the presenter, introduce, I should say, the presenter for this item number eight?
Sure, Mayor Paul. So I have the pleasure to introduce Tina Kapoor, the Economic Development Manager. She will be providing an overview of her division, which is Economic Development Division, as well as the update on the Economic Development Committee Recruitment. Tina?
Thank you, Pamela. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tina Kapoor, Economic Development Manager. And I'm here today, as, as Pamela mentioned, to give a brief overview of the division and also the Economic Development Committee. So with that, let me just share my screen. Okay. So the, the division resides within the City Manager's Office, and it's supported by one full-time Economic Development Manager, that's myself, and a portion of a part-time intern, Manu Mahi. We're small, but we're mighty. We do outreach and marketing. We find a variety of ways to listen to the needs of our businesses. And based on the feedback, we may develop partnerships to address those needs. We try and bring a regional perspective, as there may be some best practices or new models that are evolving, and see how they could apply locally. And of course, economic development is a team sport, so a lot of our work on a day-to-day basis is cross-departmental collaboration and permit facilitation. I noticed when each department or division, you know, is giving an update on, on its kind of what they do, they come up with a name for the group. So I thought you could call us the Revenue and Jobs Group, but I really like to say that we're the Vitality and Vibrancy Group. So our approach boils down to three main objectives, which is, you know, being the champion for local businesses, being the marketing arm for the city, and also to facilitate public-private sector dialogue. So taking just one step back before we dive into some specifics about what we're doing, so this here outlines the importance of this work. So vitality and vibrancy, as I just mentioned, it really is about the quality of life. So all of what we do fits into this equation by kind of focusing on attraction and retention, which then hopefully leads to all of these components of the ecosystem, further promoting the quality of life. So I'll be giving a quick overview of the key accomplishments, and what we will be bringing forward in the short term. So starting with, over summer, we launched a corporate site visit program called Cupertino Business Outreach Program, or CBOP, where we visit local companies in order to enhance the working relationship with them, help identify unique needs of employers, and connect them with resources. So again, going back to our role of being the listening mechanism and getting feedback from the private sector. So this is a picture of Shelky Tao from Water Efficient Gardens. On the left is a picture of her at her office during our visit, and on the right is a picture of her on the NASDAQ Tower at Times Square a couple of weeks ago, as a business that was recognized, supporting the United Nations Development Goals. We've also recently redesigned and relaunched the Business Connect Newsletter, again, with the themes of marketing and outreach. So Business Connect now has close to 4,000 subscribers. We are continuing to grow it and market it, and this is the great way for us to connect with our local businesses, to share resources with them, as well as highlight and showcase them. And then, of course, small businesses are top of mind for us, as always, and we support them in various ways. For example, marketing the Small Business Saturday every year, as this is, this is a snapshot from last year. We've developed collateral materials that we distribute within the community to remind people to support small businesses during the holiday shopping season. And we're also supporting businesses through efforts like ribbon cuttings and technical assistance, or outreach to small businesses with various partners. Again, as evidence of our desire to really be a communication and listening mechanism to facilitate a dialogue between the private and public sector, we recently launched a market research survey to gather input from not only our businesses, but also from the community members, to really understand, you know, how the shopping habits have changed during the pandemic, and how the city can best support during this ongoing transition. And the survey is still ongoing, and with the results of the survey, it's going to influence the way we, again, market ourselves, the kinds of partnerships that we enter into, or prioritize our future work. And I just want to thank you for your support, you know, like with ribbon cuttings, or with getting the word out about this survey. So speaking of future work, here are a few things that are in the pipeline, including, of course, the Cupertino store. So this is a City Work Program item for the Economic Development Division. Again, along the lines of marketing the city, I'm working closely with Bill Mitchell and his awesome team to design and launch this project later this year. And after the initial trial period, we will be bringing this back to council to share the results of the pilot. Another initiative that's in the works, which is really kind of meant to leverage lots of resources, whether they're local, in the county, in the region, or other places. So this will allow our businesses to access all of these services online, no matter where the resource provider is located. So it's designed to be user-friendly. It's a platform that offer an app-based experience for our local small business owners who are looking for support and connection. And we're hoping to launch this in time for the Small Business Saturday this year, again, with support from our awesome IT department. So more to come on this. Another council-directed item on the City Work Program for the Division is the Regulating Diversified Retail Use, which will be an in-depth discussion on trends in retail, both national and local, and where things are headed. So we're excited to bring this to council, to talk about this. And before we do that at a study session, this will be the first item that the new Economic Development Committee will hear. And speaking of the committee, as we all know, it was recently codified in July, and the next steps are listed here. So the recruitment is now open, and outreach has begun. The applications are due on the 10th of November, and we hope that the interviews and selection process will take place in late November. And then the first meeting of the committee will be held early next year. So in order for us to get qualified candidates for this committee, we are casting a wide net, and here are some of the marketing and advertising channels that the city will be utilizing. And again, because this committee is a bit more specialized, you'll see a few more channels listed here than we would normally look at, like advertising in the Business Connect Newsletter, reaching out to the Commercial Real Estate Group for professionals and other partners. And we, again, appreciate everyone's support in getting the word out. And with that, as you can see, we have a lot going on. It's been a great year with the city, and again, we're small, but our whole focus is on interdepartmental collaboration and partnerships. And we think that, you know, this next year, there's going to be a lot of good stuff coming online. And I really appreciate your support in getting a lot done in a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And speaking of good stuff, happy that our city manager is here. Really appreciated the first report that was provided through Parks and Recreation Department. And Tina, I'm not going to say that you didn't get any help, or you did get help, but I'm really appreciative of this excellent report. And I know I speak on behalf of our council and the public when we share that sentiment with you. We're looking forward to seeing you, me, as a member of the public, in maybe another quarter, when we get another update on the Economic Development Division of the City Manager's Office. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we're on to Consent Calendar. It is agendized as, as items nine through 13. However, we have added items 14 and 15 to the Consent Calendar. And so I will go ahead and ask if any members of our council wish to pull any of the items nine through 15 from the Consent Calendar at this time. I don't see any hands raised from our council. I'm going to go ahead and invite the, the public briefly to consider that. So these are items nine through 15. Not seeing members of the public. However, as promised earlier in the meeting, when we had the discussion under postponements and orders of the day, this is your opportunity, if you wish to speak on any items on Consent Calendar, nine through 15. And just to remind everyone, the Consent Calendar would go by the Recommended Actions on the Consent Calendar Recommended Action, if we were to vote as, as described in the, in the agenda. And so at this point, I see Annie Yang with a hand raised. I'll remind everyone that if you have anything to speak on consent, this is your opportunity to do it. We will go ahead and provide three minutes for Annie. I see Shelky Tao, as well as Jennifer, have their hands raised as well. And so please have your hand raised in Zoom before the first person is done speaking, or within three minutes. I now have a blue card from our city clerk, from Rota Frye, with regard to the Consent Calendar as well. And so if you have your blue card in, by the time the first person is done speaking, or within three minutes, we will also recognize you for this item, as well as an email from city, oh, to, rather, I should say, to City Council, I'm sorry, to City Clerk, that is all one word, at Cupertino.org, within this first three minutes, or when the first person is speaking. Annie, welcome. You are the first person to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, and councilmembers. My name is Annie Yang, and I am the Chair of the Environmental Action Committee of the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I'm also a resident of Cupertino. We very much support the city's Climate Victory Gardens Program, item 15. This not only makes it easier for property owners to remove water-guzzling turf, but replaces landscaping with California native plants that are the foundations of our local ecosystems. As you may have heard, there has been a net loss of almost 3 billion birds in the last half century, and you have maybe seen the news about the insect apocalypse. Let me give you one example of how native plants, insects, and birds are connected. Most baby birds require the caterpillars of butterflies and moths to survive. They don't eat berries, or nuts, or seeds. For example, chickadees, which are very tiny birds, about a third of an ounce, require 6,000 to 9,000 caterpillars just to raise one nest of chicks. So you can imagine larger birds needing much more. And where do they get these caterpillars? Well, our local insects evolved with native plants, and thus will only eat or lay eggs on the specific types of host plants that they know. So this is why studies have found that non-native plants have so many less caterpillars, 96% less in one study. Not enough native plants in the landscaping of our city means no insects, no insects, no birds. And not all native plants are equal. Though some plants have much higher habitat value, which means they support more pollinators and more caterpillars than other plants. So if we want to support our local biodiversity, we need to choose the plants that have high habitat value and plant them wherever we can. So here are my three suggestions for a permanent Climate Victory Gardens Program. One, ensure the plants that are used have the highest habitat value possible to support the most biodiversity. Don't use non-native plants, even if they are drought tolerant. Two, Valley Water's Landscape Rebate Program only requires 50% coverage of the converted space at plant maturity. Let's do better, and require 80% coverage of the space at plant maturity. And finally, this program fits well with a citywide biodiversity goal. Mountain View recently passed a citywide biodiversity strategy, through which it will integrate biodiversity outcomes into all city projects and policies, and private development. We encourage the council to do the same in your next priority setting period. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Annie. Next we have Shelky Tao. Welcome, Shelky. And for a quick check, we still have Shelky, as well as Jennifer, with hands raised in Zoom. I don't see any further blue cards. Madam City Clerk, if anyone came in with a, an email to cityclerk@cupertino.org, just let just let us know.
Nothing, mayor.
Nothing? Okay, uh, great. Well, welcome, Shelky. You are next.
Kristen, would you please, uh, display my, um, PowerPoint? Good evening, everyone, um, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, I want to talk about, uh, the Victory Garden Program. Next slide, please. Um, first off, I want to commend the city of, um, uh, setting up the Victory Garden Program and running it. Um, it's definitely a great program for our city and for our environment. Um, it's, um, going on for one, two years now, and I, um, can see from the report that you are considering a permanent, uh, program. I would like to make the suggestions, uh, to make it even stronger and attract more residents. Next. At Water-Efficient Gardens, we offer almost identical services. Um, if anything, I would say better than ecology action currently is providing. We, um, deliver designs, excellent designs, and we also help, uh, residents, um, uh, apply for the rebate and also manage the project all the way until it finishes. Um, we pay attention to every single detail. That's how our garden always come out to look beautiful. We provide, in addition to design, we also manage, um, rebate application, and we also, um, recommend contractors vet and recommend, and also, uh, provide installation assistance. Next. We are experts for native and rain gardens. Um, most of our gardens have at least 80% native plants. In many cases, I will say half, it's 100%, almost just native plants. Um, after Annie's speech, I felt we, we should totally discuss, because that's what we do, that's what we spend for. And we are also experts for rain gardens. Almost 90, 95% of the gardens, we have a rain garden in them. Next. These are the gardens redesigned and help implemented in Cupertino. Next. Um, our gardens did stand out. As you can see, the garden redesign was chosen to be the cover image for the Victory Garden, although we were not involved. And it, it's also, uh, selected to, um, be featured on the monthly bill of, for the city of Santa Clara. Next. We just designed and converted the Long and Northwest YMCA in Cupertino. It's a 8,000 square feet long. And Water-Efficient Gardens, we designed the whole garden, and it's a six-month, uh, process. We worked with Rotary and managed the whole process. And we, it's a four-month, um, sorry, four-week, um, um, project. We just finished two volunteer days, um, um, last Saturday and the week before, and we'll have another two more volunteer day. So as you can see, um-
15 seconds.
Okay, um, next. Um, we have implemented more than 40,000 square feet, um, since the date when, um, the Victory Garden Program was launched. So apple to apple, we build, we convert in more long areas.
Thank you very much, Shelky. That's your time. And we will go to Jennifer next. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm, wanted to just, I think you were taking public input about the Historical Society. I didn't-
Yes, that's correct.
You need to pull it. Okay, yeah, it's just comments. I'm really glad that, um, the Historical Society will have, I believe it's a line item budget now, budget item, I think, is what I understand. I only learned that from watching you guys for the last 10 to 15 years, because I didn't know anything about that type of stuff. Um, but I think having a constant funding source for the Historical Society is a really good plan. And then working on Stockelmeyer and working on the, um, Lord, the Victorian over there by Rancho San Antonio. I, you know, I, I think that, okay, my mother's hometown is, as I have said before, I don't want to keep prattling on about her hometown, but they have a Historical Society. There is a home there that goes back to the, right after the Revolutionary War, and their Historical Society supports that home as well as other historical sites in town. And they have a stable budget. They have, they're part of the city. Um, and, and I mean, I contribute to them regularly. And I think that when we have, yes, okay, the Stockelmeyer House is from 1900. Okay, it's, but as we know, California history is, is different. If you have a home that has survived that long, it probably should be restored. And I really think that we need to have a future for the Stockelmeyer House, as well as the Victorian, whatever, wherever they move it or whatever on site. But we have to have a plan. And I think that the Historical Society is a really good place to start, along with Park and Rec and Public Works, et cetera. This is part of our city's history. And I, you know, i- if people weren't aware, Mr. Stockelmeyer was very important with the California Historical Society at Deanser College in the Trian. Uh, if you have not been over there, please take a look at it. I, I was going back and looking at his contributions. It is just amazing. And I, I think that, yes, uh, the Historical Society, like any other group, probably needs to report back to the city on what their projects are, what the expectations are, just like any work group would have, et cetera. But this is our future. This is our asset for the city. And I really think that this is, this is a real win-win for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And next, we go to our blue card and live public speaker, Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I'm being quite planted by the light over there. Um, so I was, I totally missed that the Historical Society was taken off, um, was put on the consent calendar. Um, you know, I wanted, I think we should make sure that the Historical Society is, is treated fairly with respect to other organizations. So, you know, what are we getting for our, what, what is the ROI? Would they, you know, they get free space, all these other things. So we really, I, I'd like to, really like to see things tightened up a little bit, um, just so that we know what we're getting. Um, and also, if, if we are investing, if my tax dollars are going toward this Historical Society, then I should be, then the general public should be able to go to the board meetings and, and, and see, and, and understand what's going on, uh, what their agendas are. And, and, and because this is becoming a sort of quasi-public organization. Um, the other thing, okay, you know, it's coming. So, uh, the Historical Society owns the oldest house in Cupertino. So way back when Pioneer Snyder, uh, he was up, way up north, Northern California, and he looking, he was looking for his ponies, and there he found gold. Um, so he, and he was California, it was before, um, we were states. So he's actually technically a pioneer, moved to Cupertino where he grew, um, where he grew crops without irrigation. How cool is that? And he, he basically lived, uh, right in the Rancho San Antonio area. He built a house for his daughter, which was pretty much the same as his, his home. And his daughter married Dr. Hammond. So Dr. Hammond was kind of like the Sarah Cody of his day. He was the county's physician. And, um, and here we had, now it is the oldest house in Cupertino. So the Historical Society acquired it for a buck. There was a lot of fanfare about it. And all these years of that ownership, there's not even a plaque there. So nobody will know the story, right? Unless, of course, I come to city council and I tell you the story about it. And I, I've actually, uh, submitted a lot of information in, in, in public comment today. The house had, uh, had a caretaker. At the time that Oak Valley was built, I'm like going, moving fast forward toward the present, um, the Catholic, uh, Catholic diocese wound up selling, selling a whole bunch of property off for the Oak Valley development. And there was this house. What to do with the house? Got sold to the Historical Society. Uh, on the Historical Society, there were a number of people who worked at Lehigh. In fact, many years ago, there was a, a quarry, uh, museum, uh, pop-up in Quinlan Center. And, um, but what happened was, is that the quarry discovered that, um, it had a problem. It could either modernize its, uh, equipment or make sure the house was empty. So the tenant was evicted. For which the Historical Society got a lot of money. That money was to be used to maintain the house, per our general plan. It did not. And that's a problem, and we got to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And that is, uh, public comment on the Consent Calendar items. To remind everyone, that's items nine through 15, with 14 and 15 added to consent during postponements and orders of the day. Do I have any further comments from council? I see Councilmember Wei, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is a question for, uh, our, for Tina Kapoor, our economic, uh, director. Um, the, the presenter, Shelky Tao, is she the same person that on your report received, um, her pictures on the, uh, New York Post?
Yes, Councilmember Wei, she's the same, Shelky Tao.
Okay, I, I just thought that she looks, the name looks very familiar. So, um, I, I understand, because I know Shelky, um, is, owns a, um, so her presentation is about her, um, water-efficient gardens, right? So, um, perhaps that could be connected to our Victory Garden, just, just a proposal. So, um, maybe we can follow up with her.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. And I don't see any further hands raised. Um, so let me go and ask if anyone would like to move Consent Calendar, items nine through 15, as recommended in the agenda. And so Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised again. Would you like to move?
So moved.
Okay, I think in the race to raise hands, I saw Councilmember Willie, but then he has now lowered his hands. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Did you want a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have, uh, motion by Councilmember Wei and a second by Councilmember Moore to move the Consent Calendar items as recommended. And a reminder, that's items nine through 15, as recommended are the recommended actions of the respective items, uh, in the agenda. And so with no further hands raised, I am going to ask that our city clerk conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now we are on to item number 16. This is consideration of an ordinance to comply with AB 1236 to establish an expedited permit process for electric vehicle charging systems. And Madam City Manager, I see that we do have a staff report. It indicates in the agenda that they are Albert Salvador and Andre Devort. Is that still the case, Madam City Manager?
Mayor Paul, that is still the case. Uh, but I will have Sustainability Manager Andre Devort, um, to, to, uh, make the presentation, and Albert will be available to answer any question. And Andre is available to make that presentation right now. Thank you.
Great, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Glad to be with you here tonight. Um, thank you for taking this item under consideration. I have for you today a very brief presentation. Um, we will be considering, um, an ordinance to modify the municipal code to support, uh, electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining. So, uh, just real quickly, we're going to overview the seven, uh, requirements of state laws, uh, AB 1236 and AB 970, um, which, uh, should outline some of the changes in the municipal code that are in your agenda packet. The, uh, overview is that the state law requires local building departments to offer a streamlined permitting process for approving electric vehicle charging stations. This is a statewide reform that aligns with California's goals to increase the number of zero emissions vehicles on the roads. This is also a policy that aligns with the recently adopted Cupertino Climate Action Plan 2.0, uh, which, uh, asks us to, uh, do, uh, work to increase the electric vehicles on the road in Cupertino and the related charging infrastructure. So the first requirement of the law and what's built into our ordinance is, uh, again, that we need to establish an ordinance, which is what, before you today. Uh, this ordinance is to really set out the formal process of an expedited streamlining, streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations, including both Level 2 and Fast Chargers. You'll notice that, uh, we actually have a very similar, uh, streamlining ordinance on the books already with regard to small solar photovoltaic systems. And that's where we've chosen to locate this, uh, ordinance, um, as it's a very similar, uh, type of process to our existing, uh, permit streamlining for solar PV systems. Um, the second requirement is that the, we make available a checklist, a very clear and thorough checklist, that, uh, outlines all of the requirements that the building department needs for review of these types of systems, and that this is posted to our website. Um, and, uh, again, this is something that we have had in the past, and we will be updating in response to this law. Um, the third requirement is that, uh, we have an administrative approval of electric vehicle charging stations. This means that if the applicant demonstrates that they have met all of the checklist requirements, that the approval, um, happens, uh, in an administrative fashion or a similar nondiscretionary permit. The fourth requirement is that the review, uh, from our Building Division, uh, of the permit application is limited only to health and safety concerns. Um, so those are concerns related to local, state, and federal law, um, electrical safety, fire safety. The fifth requirement is something that's been in place, uh, here in Cupertino for some time now, is that, uh, electronic signatures, uh, shall be accepted. And this is, uh, this is table stakes here in the city of Cupertino, which I'm very proud of and, and, uh, very grateful to the work that Albert and Tina have done over the years to streamline and digitize the whole permit process. Item number six, uh, requirement number six is that, uh, electric vehicle charging stations shall not be subject to association approval. And that's essentially to say that, um, HOAs, uh, will not be able to hold up the permit process. And finally, um, the Building Division must create a process that, um, outlines all of the project efficiencies in one notice back to the customer uh, when a permit is submitted. So this, uh, really gives a lot of clarity to the permit applicants and, uh, allows permit applicants ahead of time to see exactly what is needed for the permit requirements. And, um, if there are any deficiencies, then the Building Division will be issuing those in a single notice. Uh, this is contained in your, in your staff report, and it's a simple flow chart that, uh, illustrates some of the, um, process here of a streamlined, uh, permit process for EV charging stations. And finally, there is a map that the state has developed to show compliance with this rule, um, across the state. As you can see, uh, many jurisdictions have become streamlined in this way. Uh, others, including Cupertino, are in the process of becoming streamlined according to the state map, and many others are not. I believe about half of the jurisdictions in the state have not yet accomplished this task. Um, and so our next steps here, uh, upon adoption of the ordinance, is that the Building Division will create that checklist, make it available to the public. Um, we'll probably want to undertake some sort of public relations campaign to let the public know that they have this new resource available. Um, and then we will notify the state to update this map so that we can show Cupertino is an all-green city. And that brings us here to the ask today, which is to consider introducing for a first reading an ordinance, amending Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 16.28, establishing this streamlined permitting process. Thanks so much. And both Albert and myself are available to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Andre. And so we'll go and open this up to members of the public. And as a reminder, this is, uh, agendized as a first reading of an ordinance. And so I have two members of the public with hands raised on Zoom. Those are Jennifer and Bruce Nagel. And Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards so far on this item?
No, mayor.
Okay. And so as a reminder, please have your hand raised in Zoom or a blue card in or an email into cityclerk, all one word, at Cupertino.org within the first three minutes or the time that the first person, uh, is speaking. And so Jennifer, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Um, yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, because I know that this is, um, we, you don't need to pull it. You're taking public input. Um, yes, I think, you know, we're going toward more- you know, we're going toward more electric vehicle charging, particularly at home, or you all mentioned in an HOA group. I just had a couple of comments. Yes, streamlining, I understand the intent of this is to try to get more and more of these. But I'll, as I stated, ministerial, by right, and streamlining, we don't want to streamline out the danger. That, maybe I said that wrong. Streamlining is not to do something where we're going to make it so easy to put something in that we overlook danger. Streamlining is supposedly to maybe help the homeowner, or apartment complex owner, to try to help residents put in this type of a charging thing at home. But we want to make sure that we do not overlook danger to neighbors' homes catching on fire, because we're not looking at proper safety protocols, making sure the house is able to handle that correct voltage. But I, that's why we have Public Works. That's why we have due process in the city. Then again, the fact that you guys just brought up the part about HOAs. All right, remember, a lot of HOAs are 55 and above. They have a lot of seniors who have trouble walking. They can trip. This, I'm sorry, this segues right into something. My friend's husband just had robot-assisted knee surgery, which was a success. We'll be, that's where we're going with this. But I'm concerned, I just, I just thought of this. You have a lot of cords and cables laying on the ground when you have the EV stuff, when you're recharging. At the library in Cupertino, you see the cables out on the ground. When you see them in other areas, that's fine. But if you have this in an HOA group, where there are seniors who are walking with canes, or walkers, or just trying to walk, the tripping potential, I don't know whether this has been addressed. But the part about this that really kind of upsets me is streamlining in an HOA. Again, whoever wrote this bill needs to be aware that they may think it's a really wonderful thing, just because someone that lived in a townhouse, or whatever, wanted to put in a charging station in their carport, in their converted garage, whatever. But then again, you could have the homeowner, you could have his mother, elderly mother, you could have his neighbors trip over the cords. What are we doing about that? There needs, I don't think anyone has addressed this. And I see it as a public issue at the library. You could have little children picking up the cords. You could have, I don't know, this has never occurred to me, but what about the tripping hazard?
And our next and final speaker, I believe, unless Madam City Clerk, anyone else has come in with a blue card, or through email?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And our next and final speaker on this item is Bruce Nagel. Welcome, Bruce.
Good to hear me now.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Couple of comments. One is, is it, this has been mentioned, it's been implemented by about half of the cities in the area of Santa Clara and San Mateo County. So, a lot of cities have this already. It's not something that's new. And we should be able to look to them for some of the challenges that we're trying to accomplish. I think it's great that you're doing this. You should also understand that the lists that I have seen to date do not show all the kinds of things that one could do to make something better and safer. And you've, you know, the last person commented on the design of the cables and where they get put. That's something that could be in there, you know, into your particular version of the code. But I think the concern is, is that if we don't do something to speed it up, we can be lasting forever waiting for getting it through, and doing something that can be processed. Speed there is going to be a big advantage. And again, there's a large number of cities that have already done this. And so, we ought to be able to look to them and determine, you know, what did they do to solve the problems that have been listed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. And so, at this point, having taken public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item number sixteen, and bring it back to our city council. Are there any follow-up comments or questions before I take a motion on this item number sixteen for ordinance number 22-2244? I don't, actually, there is one hand raised. Councilmember Wei.
I just want a clarification from staff. We have residents concerned about safety, tripping, even though it's administratively approved, but we do have safety inspections, including fire, right? Can you clarify that?
That is correct, Councilmember Wei. Albert Salvar, sorry, Assistant Director of Community Development. Yes, that is correct. We do still have a formal plan review and inspections for this type of scope of work.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Thank you, Albert. And let's see if there are any other further hands raised. I hear Vice Mayor Chow, you have a hand raised. Yes.
So, just want to clarify. So, the charging station could be installed in any public right-of-way, as long as it does not, I assume it does not obstruct wheelchair access and all these public safety codes would be, they will have to comply with existing code, right?
Yes, just to clarify, Vice Mayor Chow, permits are required for this type of work on private property. There's actually a separate permit, an encroachment permit issued by Department of Public Works, if the, if the charging station is on the public right-of-way.
And so, I think companies come and go. So, in case some of these companies abandon a charging station, what happens? Are they required to remove their equipment, so they don't just become unused? Because I've read that there are charging stations that's broken and unusable. So, are they obligated to remove those, in case their company move out of business?
Right. No, I understand the question. I actually don't know the answer to that, whether if the company goes out of business, their charging station has to be removed. I do not know the answer to that, but I certainly can find, find out that answer.
Thank you. Maybe that should be included in any contract that we have. Thanks.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I'll just make a quick comment on this. I think we need to do this. I think it's, you know, a great policy, and we should move forward towards this electrification of our transportation grid. You know, just a quick comment, I hope everyone kind of takes it to heart. You know, if this happens, and we have this great acceleration of the usage of electrical charging for vehicles, there's going to be infrastructure changes that need to be made. And so, you know, there are things like transformers, there are, you know, other parts of the grid that need to be updated. Palo Alto is experiencing a lot of these types of issues right now with a fairly significant number of electrical, you know, cars, and, you know, trying to, you know, struggle with the idea of their own utility and their, their infrastructure. So, so just something to think about. I mean, I would love to be able to support in the city of Cupertino, these efforts to anticipate. One of the things that I've been, you know, very much in favor of is, you know, trying to take on some utility wherewithal in our municipality. That's slow-going, as with a lot of things. But in any event, I just wanted to put a plug in for that. In addition to saying that, in addition to the compliance with state law, I think this is a good thing. So, if there are no further comments, and I see there are, so, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Councilmember Moore. And then, after Councilmember Moore, unless Councilmember Willie would like to speak, I'm going to ask for a motion, and I will ask our city clerk to conduct the first reading as well before that motion is made. So, Councilmember Moore.
Well, I might just jump to that. But I want to just make sure from our city attorney, because I know that some of us own electric vehicles, that we're not doing anything above and beyond the AB 1236 that might in any way make it so that we should abstain from voting because of owning an electric vehicle. I just want to clarify that.
Owning an electric vehicle would not create a conflict of interest that prevents you from participating in this decision.
Okay. Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. I will move the item if the mayor is amenable to that.
Well, let me check in with Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie, are you okay with giving your comment after the item is moved?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the first reading of ordinance number 22-2244?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 22-2244, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Cupertino, setting forth procedures for expediting permitting processing for electric vehicle charging stations.
Councilmember Moore, would you like to make the motion?
Yes. Now, I'm a little bit confused. But my text says that I would, I move that ordinance number 22-2244 be read by title only, and the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie, would you like to second, since your hand's already raised?
Yes, I definitely would.
Okay. Let's go back to Councilmember Moore. Did you have anything else on commentary? Now, your hand's lowered, so I'll take that as a no. Okay, great. Councilmember Willie, we have a motion and a second by you on the table. Would you like to make some further commentary before we vote?
Yeah, actually, that's what kind of, since I only had comments, no questions, I thought I was supposed to wait until after a motion was made. And so, just the comment, I do see this as being a very important thing, climate change. We need to be moving toward electrification, and not the reliance on the fossil fuels. And that being said, once again, Apple is, you know, in our, our community here, and they've raised the bar. I think we need to be at the forefront, too. And while we're not the first, since it's been said that some other communities have already, we definitely, in my view, we definitely don't want to be any further behind. So, I do think we need to pass this, make it as easy as possible for people to take advantage of, you know, electric vehicles. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
I want to just follow up in agreement with Councilmember Willie regarding the climate change. And I know we've all been watching the devastation in Florida, Hurricane Ian. I've visited Sanibel Island. I've got relatives that were living in, right next to Fort Myers, and beautiful Sanibel Islands. You can't get out there and have beautiful white beaches. And it's so much devastation. So, yes, we do need to keep moving on with our climate action plan and working on this. It's a serious issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow?
We just approved the Climate Action 2.0. This is in line with our aggressive goal. And the governor has a goal of 100% electric vehicle in, I think, 10 or 20 years. So, I think we do need a lot more charging station. That infrastructure has to be available, and not only, and including, I think we should think about for multifamily home apartments, do we have enough charging station for them? So, these are things that's moving in the right direction. Support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And so, with no further hands raised, I'm going to go ahead and ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Well, they said it couldn't be done. It is now 9:07. We're at the end of our enumerated agenda. There are no further oral communications. We are now at council and staff comments and future agenda items. And so, let's start with our staff. Madam City Manager, are there any staff comments? And I believe that the city clerk had indicated to me that there was a brief staff comment at the end of the agenda. Did you want to make that comment at this time?
Please disregard my request, Mayor.
Please. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to any council comments or future agenda items at this point, as described in the last described item in the agenda. And I see Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Willie. I apologize if I'm not getting the order quite right. That's just how it's showing up on my screen now. And so, Councilmember Moore, why don't you go first with any final comments from council or future agenda items?
Sure. Thank you. I just want to mention that I really enjoyed working on the subcommittee with Councilmember Wei, and getting to meet and know the Board of the Cupertino Historical Society, in particular Jennifer Furlong. It's been a real pleasure, and I'm glad we're providing some stability. And we didn't have a contract for, since 98, for the use of Quinlan. So, this is terrific, and it's a move in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. So, to touch on what I had said at the very beginning, right after oral communication, you know, we still have a few residents attending. And so, you know, to say a few more words, the study session for the 5G, you know, hopefully will bring to us possibilities for us to consider that may help with their concerns, and with the impacts, and possibly mitigation. That study session is really the crux of us being able to talk in detail about those details. Since that already is a, an approved future agenda item from well over a year ago, and my conversations with our city manager, I believe it's going to be coming in the very near term. That being said, just want to alert the community, so that they can feel that we are here and trying to help them in that way. Next up is the housing bills that were brought up by a resident. I do think that, wow, that many bills were signed on housing that are clearly going to be changing the landscape of how we're going to be processing projects in our community and stuff. I do think we need to know that. The sooner, the better. It's always hard to get agenda items added to our council meetings, but I do think that that is pretty darn important. We should know before projects actually come. So, I'd like to make that request, a study session for the housing bills. I need somebody to second it for it to become official. Should I pause for a moment?
Let's, let's, okay. Would anyone like to second that? I do see Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised, and Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised, and you. Did you want to second Councilmember Willie's request, since he's asking Vice Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Okay. So, and does that speak to your hand raising? Okay, good.
True. Then, one more. You know, of course, the resident brought up the, the concern and issue about the unhoused resident that's on the sidewalk. And so, I would like to also request a study session. You know, we have a new city manager who, you know, wasn't here when we addressed the Wolf Road homeless camp, encampment that was there. And the times have changed a little bit, but I do think we need to review this. They're, at the current site, unlike the one that was on Wolf Road, has, in my view, no way to put sanitation in that proximity on that small sidewalk. So, I do think a study session, so that we and the city manager can understand the options. And there are options, because we did do that back, you know, two years ago with the Wolf Road encampment. And so, I do think a study session, rather than just leaving it in the lap of the city manager and hope something happens. So, we should be part of the solution in the process. So, hopefully somebody else will second that.
I'd like to clarify this. Councilmember Willie, are you asking for a study session on this particular individual, or on unhoused issues in general?
Yes. Let's focus on, on the issue at hand. And if more come up, you know, maybe it'll be under the same umbrella. Right now, we've got a situation, small sidewalk, sanitation issues. You know, we need to, to help the city manager with this. And we have to help as a council, not individual council meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And I'll go to Vice Mayor Chow again. And sorry to pick on you again, Vice Mayor Chow, but your hand is raised. Did you want to go ahead and second that request? Did you want to go ahead and second that request from Councilmember Willie so that we could get it into the queue?
I am not sure if a study session is the best way to address this issue, but maybe a subcommittee so we are more involved, but.
Okay. I'll take that as a no in terms of seconding. I'll look to any, and Councilmember Willie, don't despair. Your, 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 your comment is still noted in the record. We simply would proceed without having a second at this time. And so let's go ahead. Vice Mayor Chow and, and Councilmember Willie, I think we had a very generous two minutes there. Good suggestions. Thanks very much. But at this point, we'll move on to Vice Mayor Chow with her future agenda items or comments at this time.
For that particular item, I did suggest that the city manager should issue a letter to the community on the best way to help, help unhoused persons in this situation. The best way is to donate to all the many organizations who are helping them rather than disrupting their services. So I think there are best practices that maybe the city manager can help the community to express their concern and compassion in a way that's productive. And I'd like to request an update on pre-approved ADU plans, which we have approved, I think, two years ago. And I just checked recently that we have pre-approved ADU from four different vendors. And I want, if we can get an update from the staff and what's the future plan, since this might be part of, would help with our housing element, that would be great. Doesn't have to be a study session, but maybe an update at one of the meeting is fine. Or, or, or an update in writing. Another thing I hope that we eventually could have time to work on is the home sharing program because I think we have 25% seniors in our community who might have space in their homes and we, but then it's challenging to rent a room out. However, there are services that help manage that process if we can learn about this kind of program. I'm hoping maybe Housing Commission can look into those programs. But yeah, I think that may be a good first step. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow for those suggestions. And I see that Councilmember Moore has a hand raised, and so we'll go to Councilmember Moore.
I don't know. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if the vice mayor needs a second on, on that with regards to looking into the home share ideas or, or whether or not that falls under, and perhaps the city attorney could weigh in on this, does that fall under the, the housing policy items that we could be looking at for the housing element somehow? Is there some intersection there? Because it sounds like a great idea that could go, go with it.
Okay. So I'll take that as a follow-up request or question and not the actual seconding. I think you're requesting that Chris give us some information.
Yeah. So I would, I would really need to check with, with CDD and our consultants about sort of how that might fit in with the housing element. It's, it's an interesting point, but not one that, that I've considered and it might be a policy issue that we'd want to get their input on.
A policy, but there might be a study session or something, a referral to Housing Commission or something in that order, right? For some item like this?
Yeah. Yeah. Separate and a, I, I believe Councilmember Moore's request was how it would fit together with the housing element, but that's separate and apart. There could, there could be a referral or, or a request for a future agenda item. That's correct.
Okay. So let's bring it back to Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Moore, were you?
I'll second that.
Okay. You'll second it.
Bring it back for, yeah. Be great.
All right. And Councilmember Moore, before you go on, I think Vice Mayor Chow might have had a quick follow-up. Did you raise your hand?
Just to clarify, so we are bringing it back to the council so we can refer to the Housing Commission for, for the study? Is that something that Councilmember Moore is seconding? I'm not sure.
Well, I would contemplate that as potential direction from council, right? I mean, that would be some added, you know, item that we would ask the Housing Commission to, and we wouldn't be able to agendize that right now, of course. And so we would probably need to put that on the, a future agenda to get council direction, among other things.
Right. There are a couple of ways to agendizing it, agendize it depending on how much council wants to discuss it before referring it to the Housing Commission.
Okay. Fair enough. So you're.
How about the pre-approved ADU updates? Do I have a second to get the updates?
Councilmember Moore, since your hand is raised, would you like to second that request by Vice Mayor Chow for ADU updates?
Yes. Is the ADU update, are you looking to find out how many people have been using the pre, the pre-approved plans essentially?
Initially that I'm thinking that, but then actually after listening to the housing bills, maybe, maybe first an update can be in writing, but eventually I think it will be worthwhile to have a study session on ADU exist status, current status and the new, new bills.
Okay. So let's, let's, let's bookend this clearly. Your request is for probably a memo update, right? And so just to make sure that Councilmember Moore understands what she's seconding. Councilmember Moore, you are seconding that memo update request, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you're basically putting a placeholder, Vice Mayor Chow, in, in the future, once you read this memo, I take it, that you might ask for a study session later, correct?
Could be after our overall housing bill review.
Okay.
Maybe we should have that first.
Sounds good. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore for her items for discussion and future agenda items.
Pardon? I didn't, I did not have, have any additional items to add.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Well, folks, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda unless Councilmember Way has something. And I'm getting an indicator from the city manager. Pamela, did you want to share a thought or a word before we adjourn?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just want to consolidate my notes and make sure that we're on the same page.
Sure.
So Councilmember Willie asked for a 5G study session and yes, it's in a future council agenda, should be coming to you in the next few months. Councilmember Willie also asked for a housing bills update. I just wanted to remind city council that city attorney Chris Jensen actually sent out a memo today, earlier today regarding the housing bills. So if I could ask for city council to read the memos and then consider bringing that memo back for further discussion, that will be, provide more clarification. So again, Chris reminded me that the governor signed 41 bills last week and there's quite a bit, and it's a very extensive memo. And also on the homeless study session, I don't know if Mayor Paul, Councilmember Willie got the second support, so that was my first question. And then I didn't quite get the scope of the study session on that one.
I did not get a second for, for that one, for a study session.
Okay. And for Vice Mayor Chow's direction for the city manager's office to provide information on the website, I did not hear a second on that as well.
Information on the website for what?
Best practice is to help the unhoused individuals through nonprofit organizations rather than.
Okay. So on the, on the same subject, okay. I have a consistency in my notes as well. There wasn't a second there. So let me go to, Councilmember Willie, I see your hand is raised. Did you want to provide that second or did you have a?
Yes. Yes. I want to provide that second. I mean, homeless is definitely an issue that we should be doing whatever avenues that we can to, to help. And so if this is an avenue that's currently on the table, I second it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, I didn't second the study session because I trust the staff is working very hard with the county and all the agencies trying to address the issue. I think we should let the staff work it out and therefore I only recommend a letter to the community on how best to help because everyone is so, yeah.
Okay.
So long to help and, but we hope that people help in the way that's not interfering with staff's work.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. So we'll have a letter to the community, I presume, updated on the website as our, our city manager indicated. Anything further?
Sorry. Two more. So the ADU vendors, I, I was in communication with Community Development Director Ben Fu and he provided informations. We'll have a memo to the council shortly on that matter. And lastly, the home sharing idea, I think my understanding is right, that we're waiting for our housing element consultant to provide the draft housing policy. If that is one of the policy, then council will definitely review it. If not, staff will come back and get further direction.
Okay. So if home sharing is part of the recommended policies by the consultant, you're saying?
If that's the case, because we have not seen the draft policy at this point.
Okay. And what, if it's not part of the draft policy, how are you?
We'll come back to city council for a further direction to see if you want to refer to Housing Commission.
Okay. Got it. So, okay, got it. Got it. Okay. So you'll visit us one way or the other is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow?
I think timing is of the essence, so I think it's appropriate to refer to the Housing Commission earlier so they can start checking out the home share program provided by project Sentinel, Roomingly and the Silver Nest. Then, then by the time we have a draft housing element, we have more information.
Well, let's, let's ask this, yeah, without getting too much into the weeds.
Off this discussion, just because this item isn't agendized.
It's not agendized, but it is scheduling. So let me, let me just go really quickly. So Madam City Manager, with regard to the housing element consultant not providing this in the draft policy, timing wise, could we, do we need to wait to a further discussion or can we talk about, say before, you know, the end of the year, bringing this? Because you indicated that it would, it would come back in this other alternative form. Are you contemplating that before the end of the year or after the start of the new calendar year?
I don't recall the schedule from the housing element consultant good.
Oh, oh, right. That might not come back until the calendar year ends, right?
Yeah. So I will have, I would have to double check with the CDD team on the timing of that item.
I see. I see. Well, let's make this a TBD, Vice Mayor, and we'll call it a victory because we're actually getting some, you know, quite extensive on the, on the moment feedback that we haven't received before on this particular item. So I'm sure our city manager will in good faith and timely, you know, get back to you with regard to the timing of this. So, well, I don't see any additional hands raised, although Councilmember Willie is, is holding his hand up physically. And so Councilmember Willie, did you have any closing thoughts?
Yeah. A final comment in regards to our city manager about the, the housing bills. I haven't read the email slash letter from the city attorney about, you know, some of the housing bills, but I think it's really important. I mean, we are apparently now in the custody of this letter from our city attorney. Great. Thank you, Chris. That's great. But our, you know, our community needs to know the impact and all the bills probably are not going to be impacting our community. So a study session that would take the ones that will affect our community, the ones that will affect it more than the other ones, and that's the study session. Even if the residents don't attend the city council meeting directly, it'll be recorded, the information will be presented and the impacts, and we can then use that as a vehicle with our community, you know, concerns. So again, I, I really want to say us on the city council getting a quick synopsis from the city attorney helps us, but it's the larger community that we need to be concerned about. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. I don't see any further hands raised at this time. And so we are at the end of our agenda for our October 4th, 2022 regular meeting. I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We'll see you next time on October 18th for the second regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council in October 2022. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night and meeting adjourned.